I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Texas Southmost College District. Trustees present, Ms. Delia Sines, Dr. Norma Lopez Harris, Dr. Tony Zabaleta, Mr. Edward Camarillo, Mr. Edgar Garcia, myself, Mrs. Aldrete is absent, and our president, Dr. Jesus Roberto Rodriguez. And I'll call on Dr. Zabaleta for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag and pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, one indivisible.
Public comment? No public comment. No one wants to talk to us. It's a good thing. Chairwoman's report. Garcia Middle School Pink Event. I was happy that I was invited by Ms. Becerra, and it was a mother-daughter breast cancer awareness event, and it was so, so nice. A couple of people gave their testimonies of survival of cancer, and I know that we have a survivor here with us, and thank you, Lord. And it was very, very nice. It was a good way to kick out the Breast Awareness Month. Brunswick PD Night Out. Later that day, Trustee Garcia and I attended the annual Brunswick Police National Night Out. These events are held all over the county and country as a way of strength police community partnership and make our neighborhoods safer places to live. It was, the Brunswick PD was amazing. There were thousands of people. And I had gone to the Cherries one in Harlingen, and then I went to the Port Isabel one. It's a really nice way to connect with the community again because they're out. But Brunswick PD was really amazing. Mr. Garcia was there in his Superman suit, and so it was very, very enjoyable. Thank you for going.
He looked like the real thing.
Yeah.
Just needed the telephone booth.
The kids enjoy it, so.
Everybody wanted pictures with Mr. Garcia. And I mean, everybody, the girls do. Trustee Cybersecurity Training Confirmation. As my final item, I would like to take a minute to reflect on the TSE Board of Trustees. Members have completed all the cybersecurity and other training required of them for the 2025 calendar year, and I know this takes, I don't know why it takes so much time, because we know we have to do it, and we just put it off and put it off, and it, but it, this time it took like half an hour at least. So we're in accordance with TSE Board Policy, BBD Legal Board members orientation and training, and we have completed, the whole board has completed it. Thank God. Thank you, sir. Unfortunately, we have a, we had a sad event in the college. We've, we lost two members of the TSE Scorpion family, Mr. Loera, which did a wonderful job in building and refurbishing and redoing our boardroom, and he passed away unexpectedly. Also, our very good friend and friend of the college, Dr. Kevin O'Malley, and I would like to observe a moment of silence in your honor. Thank you. May they rest in peace. President's Report. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, trustees. Earlier this month, we hosted representatives from the National University to celebrate the signing of a new memorandum of understanding. National University caters to busy adults and working professionals seeking to continue their education and earn a university degree. The MOU creates seamless pathways for our community college graduates and advances our strategic priority of increasing our partnerships with universities to support successful student transfer. In addition, current TSE students, recent alumni, and employees who have graduated with a transferable associate's degree will benefit from a 25% tuition discount at National University for most bachelor's and master's degrees. Thank you to Chair Garza for your participation in the signing ceremony. On Monday, we held our allied health pining ceremony, which celebrated students graduating from the Patient Care Technician, Medical Record Specialist, and Certified Nurse Assistant programs. It was a fitting event to mark the transformation of these students into healthcare professionals, and we cannot wait to see the impact they will have in our communities. Thank you to Dr. Stella Garcia, Dr. Angelica Fuentes, and the entire WTC team for all of the planning that went into making it a special night. Thank you also to Trustee Camarillo for your participation in the event. On November 11th, we honor our veterans during this holiday, national holiday. The event brings together a number of community participants, including the Rivera Early College High School Air Force JROTC, who posted the colors, and our own student, Daniel Perez, performed the National Anthem. In addition, the keynote speech was a member of Veterans Female United, Ms. Oralia Z. Fernandez. Thank you to our Student Services team, including Dr. David Plummer and Mr. Francisco Quesada, for your leadership in planning the event. I also thank Chair Garza and Vice Chair Sines for participating in the ceremony. Our Instructional Division hosted a student master copy art exhibit earlier this week. The Master Copy Project gives students the opportunity to explore new techniques and processes while building confidence in their artistic abilities. Thank you to interim dean, Dr. Chris Alves, and Fine Arts Program Coordinator, Robert Andres, for supporting these students in nurturing their talents. As we begin to approach the holiday season, our hard-working Student Services team, led by Dr. Plummer, Dr. Tipton, and Ms. Vanessa Vazquez, has held a number of events to engage our community and promote student engagement and retention. This includes the Registration Roundup, Domestic Balance Awareness Event, Registration Spooktacular, Hunted Grounds Tour, Dia de los Muertos, Student Government Association Swearing In, Veterans Day Ceremony, and Graduation Fair. And now, it is time for this month's video highlighting the activities that have occurred since we last met. Danny, can you please start the video? In closing, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for their continued commitment to the college and the communities we serve. During this season of Thanksgiving, we are grateful for the dedication that our entire Scorpion community has to our vision of transforming lives and uplifting families. Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, this concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. It was a busy month with the Hunted House, and then Dia de los Muertos, and then what else did we have that was big too? Student services just outdid themselves this year. So, thank you for everybody that put it together. Everything was a lot of fun. That Hunted House was scary. Dr. Harris and I were looking at supposedly a patient that was being operated on, and while I'm looking at it, somebody touches my foot. It was like, ah! But it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. It was very well put together. Now we'll go to consideration and possible action on approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting, October the 16th, 2025. Motion by Ms. Sines?
Second.
Second by Mr. Camarillo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Consideration and possible action to approve resolution for Cameron County Appraisal Board election. You're going to take that, Mr. Pena?
Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez. Mr. Pettis is unavailable today. I am going to attempt to assist in this matter. This consideration and possible action to approve the resolution for the Cameron County, Cameron Appraisal District Board of Elections. As you recall, last month, you voted to select trustee Alejandra Aldrete to be placed on the ballot. The resolution is to approve, casting 92 votes, for trustee Aldrete to serve on the Board of Directors of the Cameron Appraisal District. I have the resolution. If you would like me to read it, Madam Chair?
Is, do we need to?
No.
No, then we don't have to.
We can pass that, then.
Okay. I move to approve the resolution casting 92 votes for trustee Aldrete to serve on the Board of Directors for the Cameron County Appraisal District. I need a vote in a second, Mr. Pena?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Consideration and possible action on approval of Texas Southmost College District Board of Trustees Order of Election. Mr. Pena?
Madam Chair, members of the board, according to our BBVA legal elections conducting, the elections, the governing body of our political subdivision, including our college district Board of Trustees, are to order the election, for an election to be held on a uniform election date. The election shall be ordered out later than the 78th day before the election day. The uniform election date is May the 2nd, 2026. The following trustees' places are up for election on May 2nd, 2026. Place one for a six-year term, Adela G. Garza, incumbent. Place two for a six-year term, Alejandra Aldrete, incumbent, and place five for a two-year term, Edgar E. Garcia, the incumbent. I have the order to, or the resolution, rather, to approve the election to be held. Madam Chair?
I move to approve the resolution casting, no, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong place. I move to approve the Texas Southmost College District Board of Trustees Order of Election for Places one, two, and five. I have a motion. I need a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sines. Discussion? I had forgotten that. It's going to be fun for you, Mr. Garcia, because you get to run this time, and then two, two years later, you have to run again.
The people get what they want, right?
My, 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 go on.
It's the people's choice, so I'm excited to hear from, and be elected, to be sitting on this board and continue doing this great work that we're doing.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Consideration and possible action on approval of the Texas Southmost College Board, Texas College District Board of Trustees Notice of Election.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez, BBVA legal elections, conducting election, also provide the information on providing the notice of election for the Texas Southmost College District elections. The attached notice that you have in your packet of election is to be posted on both the board's website and newspapers. The document is only to be signed by the board chair. Needs an action item, Madam Chair?
I move to approve the notice of election of the Texas Southmost College District Board of Trustees for Place one, two, and five.
Second.
That was second by Dr. Harris. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Consideration and possible action on the designation of an election agent.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez, in accordance with the Texas Election Code 31.123, if our secretary of the governing body of our political division, other than a county or city or the authority performing the duties of a secretary under this code, does not maintain an office during the hours and days required by Section 31.122, the secretary or other authority shall appoint another officer or employee of the political subdivision as the secretary or authority's agent to perform the duties provided by this section. The appointment is subject to the approval of the political subdivision's governing body. The attached resolution designates Dr. Stella Garcia as the election agent for the upcoming Texas Southmost College District Board of Trustees election.
I move, are you there?
Yes.
I move to approve the resolution designating Dr. Garcia, because she's got nothing else to do, as the election agent.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Dr. Harris. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Consideration and possible action on approval of the election services contract with Cameron County Elections. Mr. Pena?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez, again, in accordance with BBVA legal elections, conducting an election, there's a provision that the college can enter into contract with the county elections administrator to furnish election services. We just received that contract, and I'm not sure it's in your packet, it's not in your packet, but we do have it, and it is almost identical to the same one that we had last year. The cost this year is going to be $151,000 and change.
Nobody should go into a runoff, because then that's another forty thousand.
I need a motion to approve the contract with you, Cameron County Elections.
I move to approve the agreement for the election services with Cameron County Elections, Department and authorized President Rodriguez to execute the contract. I need, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Camarillo. Any discussion? For the record, we tried not to have, not to have runoffs, but the Secretary of State said, no, we have to do it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Finance Committee, Ms. Sines?
The Finance Committee met on Monday, November 2, 2025. Present were President Rodriguez, myself, Ms. Delia Sines, TSE Administration, and College Legal Counsel. The committee discussed the following items. 12A, consideration and possible action on award RFP 26-02 for the Information Technology IT Outsourcing and Staffing Services, and I'll call on Mr. Luis Villarreal to present the item.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez Harris, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez. Again, before you, you have to consider the award of an RFP for Information Technology Outsourcing and Staffing Services. Let me explain the genesis for this. We've been actively trying to hire individuals into my department, bringing in some of the infrastructure inside, and have had limited success, some success, some not success, in acquiring talent into the department. And as you know, as you've seen over the last few months, we've got quite a few projects in the IT department. So, I was discussing this matter with Mr. Vega, and Mr. Vega suggested to me that we maybe talk to some recruiting agencies or staffing agencies to see if we could have any luck acquiring some talent that avenue, and it worked. Right away, we were able to find a couple of resources in the valley that are very talented and had not, previous to that, applied for any of the open positions that we had published. So, we engaged those companies. Unfortunately, they were not DIR companies or on a co-op, so I was limited in how long I could engage those resources for, and so they helped me work through that. We were also able to engage a resource that was helpful to the Student Services Department that was a Salesforce consultant in a similar manner, different company. But again, we're limited on how long we could have that resource, and Salesforce is the underlying framework for our Target X software that we use for recruiting. And it is, it is a big software package and requires some expertise. And so, after those initial successes, speaking with Mr. Vega and the purchasing department, decided to issue an RFP soliciting- Department, decided to issue an RFP soliciting recruiting and staffing companies that specialize in information technology and infrastructure or in, on the application side, et cetera, possibly even with websites. And I wrote an RFP to solicit all kinds of services, uh, in case we need them, short-term, project-oriented, et cetera. We were, I was expecting maybe five or ten recruiting agencies to reply. Um, we're extremely popular, apparently, and I think sixty companies actually answered the call and submitted proposals. And we had about two weeks to review, so we're, it was, i- if you, uh, looked at the package and thought, wow, I don't want to read all this, I promise you, we had to read all of that. So we reviewed sixty-some proposals. Again, uh, the HR department and purchasing department were very helpful in getting, giving us a strategy to kind of, uh, to kind of minimize the number of companies that we could work with, and eventually settled on the thirteen that we're providing, uh, to you guys today. This process followed our normal RFP process. Again, we started with, I think, sixty-one, sixty-three companies, something like that. We, we were able to whittle down to forty-three that actually, uh, provided us price index and costing for all of those different positions. And you can see here, I threw the kitchen sink at this RFP, right? Network engineering, system administration, cybersecurity, data analysts, report writers, you name it, should we need them over the course of the next year or two, whatever. Right? And then went through the whole process of reviewing them, uh, and scored them. Uh, this was the evaluation committee, Gabby Ochoa, my chief information security officer, Don Diegoz, network engineer, who's now my technical director, and Lilia Leal Garcia from Human Resources, who was extremely helpful. It was very helpful to have an HR person there, because we're dealing with recruiting companies, HR companies, basically. And went through a scoring process. So what you see here is the thirteen companies out of the sixty original companies that we deemed, uh, worthy of bringing to the board for consideration and approval. Uh, the reason that it's that lengthy, uh, uh, purchasing did recommend we stay under ten, but there are some skill sets that were not in the top end, that are in some of those top, the lower ends, like, for example, with Campus Works and Furelli and companies like that, they are partners or competitors with, uh, Lucian on the application side. And I think it's valuable for us to have those sort of options, should we need them. So that's why the cutoff is down there at thirteen for those companies, and you can see the scoring is very close for a lot of these. And honestly, there were probably thirty companies, forty companies, that were valid recruiting staffing agencies that we could have looked towards. But what we're recommending is these thirteen, because these are the thirteen that came out, uh, the highest, and majority of them are in Texas, which is an advantage. The majority of them are also historically underutilized businesses somehow, that's probably also affecting their score. But I feel very confident that we can find, uh, professionals that we need to stopgap, should we have trouble hiring, or we do have particular projects that need a helping hand on the networking side or the application side, et cetera. Anyway, those are the consideration factors, uh, every cost, everything was in play, and these expenses will be coming out of this budget here. Again, we may not use any of these companies, uh, but right now, we're using two of those thirteen, as it so happens, but they're, they're about to expire. One of those companies provided me a system administrator who's been extremely helpful, uh, with us in some of our upcoming projects with the firewall and the backup systems and stuff like that. He's been a game changer. So hopefully, eventually, one day, he'll be released from that, uh, agreement with the staffing agency and apply for the job. And that's not a guarantee, but he's a, he's very qualified. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Uh, if you have any questions, please, I'll, I'll be here and try to answer.
I move to award RFP twenty-six dash zero-two for information technology outsourcing and staffing services to Alinets, App Masters, Inc., Campus Works, Inc., Sinosure Technologies, Furelli, Franklin Fitch, Inc., Integrate Us LLC, Net2Source, PMCS Services, Price Sense LLC, Resk Black, Inc., Software Professionals, Inc., Specialist Staffing Solutions, Inc., and authorize President Rodriguez to execute the contract as presented.
I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Harris, second by Ms. Science. Any discussion? Yes.
Mr. Villarreal, so going to, um, cost. So if services are needed and you're going to identify one of these companies, or the team's going to identify one of these companies, how's the cost going to be associated? Are we going to base that off of a, the current pay scale? Or are we going to just take what, what they submit? This is the price of our individual that's going to help you for this three-to-six-month project?
That's a great question. Um, we have, I think I did some work for the HR department, because we now have a price index from sixty to forty of the sixty companies that tell us what a network engineer in the valley should get paid. Uh, most of them are very similar. Uh, I would reserve the right to negotiate with them on those rates. Uh, I'm very good at that kind of stuff, and so I would reach out to, say, four or five companies of those thirteen and say, hey, I look, I need a network person, or I need, uh, somebody to help us with web content management on the website, and then I would just let them bid it, and then, and they'd be pre-approved, so we would just engage them for whatever number of months we need them, or even weeks. Right? But that's a good question, but I do have cost sheets from all of those forty. Uh, the original nineteen we eliminated is simply because they didn't provide us any cost. Yeah. It's a great question, so I don't know entirely how I'm going to do it yet, but I'll have some options.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Twelve B. Consideration and possible action on approval of New Line Onboard Computers Purchase, and I'll call on Mr. Luis Villarreal to present the item.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez Harris, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Rodriguez. Uh, before you have an item to consider regarding the replacement of the onboard computers for our New Line Mobile, uh, carts, which are the large screens that, at one time, we even used to roll in here during the pandemic, and we were doing Zoom all the time in here. Those are the carts we're talking about. These are the carts, the mobile carts that are in our classrooms, the large, larger monitors. Behind those monitors is an onboard computer in the back, right, that the faculty primarily use to provide instruction. Those are proprietary. We thought we could replace them with, like, Dell laptops or something, it doesn't, not going to work, so we had to go back to New Line and get, we went to three companies that did our resellers for the New Lines to get pricing, and, uh, before you today, we're recommending that we use the one that was the lowest bidder, which was, uh, um, Howard Technologies. So Howard Technologies, we worked with before, um, they will come in and basically replace the onboard computers, and the reason they need replacing is that they are, A, end of life, and B, will not, you cannot load the newest operating system on there, Windows eleven, they're, they're on Windows ten, they can't be upgraded, and if we can't upgrade them, we can't patch them, they become a security risk, and I know that sounds crazy, but crazy is where we are, and so we need to, we need to replace those as soon as possible. So we'll take that off of the money that you allocated for the Dell computers that we were going to try to use for this anyway, and, uh, we worked that out, that out with the budgeting department already, so it'll come out of this year's funds.
I move to approve purchase of one-ten New Line onboard computers in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy from Howard Technology Solutions through TIPS contract, and authorize President Rodriguez to execute the purchase order contract as presented.
A motion by Dr. Harris?
Second.
Second by Ms. Science. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Twelve C. Consideration and possible action on approval of matching grant support for the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation, BCIC Quality of Life Grant, and I'll call on Dr. Stella Garcia to present the item.
Thank you, Secretary Lopez Harris, Chair Garza, members of the board, President Rodriguez. I'm going to do a quick intro of this grant, and with your permission, turn it over to Monica Gonzalez, who will give you more details. But we are applying to, uh, BCIC's Quality of Life Grant application. It, uh, was initially due December one, which is right when we come back from the holidays, but we have gotten an extension to December fifteenth. And so this is required of a twenty percent match, and so we always bring grants that have a match to the board for approval. We have secured a portion of the match through another grant, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars, and so, um, the portion of, of, of what we're asking the board is the two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty cents, because that's how we've, we've gotten to in terms of the budget for the grant. And so with your permission, um, Ms. Gonzalez will walk you through some of the details of what we will put in the grant application.
Good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, President Rodriguez. I am not a usual suspect here at these gatherings. Uh, I am Monica Gonzalez. I, uh, my job is to write grants for the college, which brings me here tonight. Uh, I am preparing a proposal of, to the, to BCIC's Quality of Life Grant Program. Uh, our eligibility requirements include: We must be located within Brownsville city limits and open and accessible to the public at large; address the purpose of, uh, the program and be aligned with BCIC's mission; be for public use; be self-sustainable and maintained properly once completed; be shovel-ready; be well-planned with stated goals and objectives. And we do, uh, our mission, or our new strategic goals, uh, specifically to enhance facilities and to elevate community engagement, aligns beautifully with their goals to, uh, revitalize downtown Brownsville, specifically the historic buildings. Our, um, our project is a three-pronged project. First of all, we would like to install informative signage outside of our historic sites. We have ten historic sites in mind. We would like to renovate the old morgue and use it as a welcome center for guests that come to the campus, and we would, for those who can't make it to the campus, and hopefully, uh, to entice people to come to the campus, we would like to enhance our existing online virtual tour. Oh, do we, should I go back? There it is. And this is just an example of what our existing virtual tour looks like. We have some beautiful drone shots of the campus, and we would like to expand that to reflect a, uh, the walking route that we're proposing that showcases our historic buildings. Nothing is set in stone just yet as far as, uh, the path that the route will take and which stops will come first, uh, but this is a suggestion that we have so far. I like that it takes people through the campus, but, uh, this is open to discussion, and it's not required that we have, uh, that level of detail for the proposal that's due, uh, next month. Uh, here are the buildings that we're hoping to showcase: The Old Morgue, the Regiment House, uh, the Buffalo Soldier Marker outside of the Regiment House, Cavalry Building, and the former military cemetery site. The Commissary Building, Champion Hall, the Bachelor Non-Commissioned Officers' Quarters, Gorgas Hall, and Commandant's Quarters. We have, uh, partnered with FD2S, and on the left side of the screen, uh, that is part of their presentation as far as, uh, design references that we may want to consider. And to the right is a rendering of what the Old Morgue might look like as the welcome center. And, uh, Dr. Savaletha, thank you to you, because you were instrumental in this project when it first was conceived in twenty nineteen, and that's where this rendering is from, from the twenty nineteen proposal. This also for FD2S is giving you an idea of what the signage might look like outside the Old Morgue. If you look on the left side of the screen where there's that little arrow, that's an illustration of what the sign might look like. Uh, I think we've all been to Gladys Porter Zoo. Think of the signs outside the animal enclosures in Gladys Porter Zoo. They're kind of tilted at an angle, and they have photos and text. So yeah, you, you could see that small, it's kind of small, but on the left side of the screen, you can see where they're proposing that one of the signs might go. And here's a close-up of what the sign might look like, and up on the top right-hand corner, another view of the sign outside the morgue.
And the one right at the middle that you can see the person standing, and the, the sign is kind of at an angle, so that's kind of the view of the signage.
Here's a look at our, uh, budget. We have, uh, built in a few items that are not very daunting, not as daunting as, uh, the repair of the old buildings. We have a lot of windows that are in need of repair, and that's where the bulk of this budget is. Walking tour signage and, uh, the ver, the quote for the virtual tour. So the project total comes out to one million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Twenty percent of that is two hundred and seventy-two, nine eighty-three, and sixty cents. So far, we have seventeen thousand, five hundred, so we're looking for your approval to match two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty cents for our BCIC proposal. You did a good job, ma'am. Thank you so much. Uh, may I answer any questions?
Yes. I move, I move to approve the allocation of matching grant support in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty cents contingent of the Notice of Grant Award from BCIC, and to authorize President Rodriguez to execute related documents.
Motion by Dr. Harris?
Second.
Second by Ms. Science. Discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, Ms. Gonzalez, um, so two things. I think two months ago, we approved that signage project where we have the company that's going to be doing this onsite, signage, vehicular, pedestrian. Um, is that going to affect or enhance this project?
Go ahead. Thank you, uh, trustee Camarillo. So we, when FD2S was onsite to do the assessment, we, we told them about this project, and they shared with us many projects they've already done, like with the Alamo and other cities, and that's why they added into a report they sent, they sent to me, because they'll have their report to the board, well, to us in December, which we'll share with you in January, but that we're trying to make sure that there's an integration in the design with, um, whatever they proposed for all of the other signage with this signage as well. Yeah. So that's, it's, we're trying to connect them.
Perfect. Yeah, I hate for us to do two different things, you know, when that company's already been hired to do that. The last thing was, when, so on the, on the, the facade of the buildings, um, you mentioned the windows, what about the, um, the, the repairment of the motor of some of the buildings, um, in this area? I know, I think we talked about that, um, getting some of that filled in. Will that be included for those that need it?
Uh, not on this grant, but we are working on that. Uh, this grant is specifically for the, the windows and the doors that we need to replace, but we're working, uh, some of the physical staff, uh, physical plant staff are, are filling that, some of that in. And what we can't, I think we're, this is going to require an RFP for the windows, right? Because it's, it well exceeds our threshold at the one, over one million dollars, so we're going to look for vendors to be able to help us with our historic buildings and, and things other than the windows, yes, and doors. The grant, though, itself will only support the window and door replacement.
Got it. Thank you.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Twelve D. Consideration and possible action on approval of matching grant support for the Texas Workforce Commission's Jobs and Education for Texans Jet Grant Program, and I'll call on Dr. Stella Garcia and Ms. Monica Gonzalez to present the item.
Thank you, Secretary Lopez Harris, Chair Garza, members of the board, President Rodriguez. We do not have a presentation here, but this grant also requires a match. This is the jet grant, which we have brought to you, uh, before. This is for equipment, for our classrooms, for our technical labs. Um, this one is not due until January, but since we don't have a board meeting in December, we wanted to bring it now. We don't have a full project to present to you. Monica is meeting with, uh, in the instructional staff with the, our interim vice president of instruction, Mr. Oscar, and on this, to get ideas. We, they've already presented one, um, and I think we're going to move forward with that. The maximum grant that we can submit is for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and the match would be eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. If, we don't have the final project, I mean, we can tell you what we're talk, we're looking at, but I don't want to give you something that may change before we submit, uh, but at this point, we're just requesting your permission to authorize the, the match for this grant. And if, uh, you have any questions, uh, Monica is available to answer them.
I move to approve the allocation- I move to approve the allocation of matching grant support up to $18,750 contingent of the Notice of Grant Award from the Texas Workforce Commission and to authorize President Rodriguez to execute related documents.
Have a motion by Dr. Harris.
Second.
Second by Ms. Science. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Twelve E. Consideration and possible action on approval of Budget Amendment twenty-six dash zero-zero-two to recognize excess revenue in the amount of $1,054,305. And I'll call on Mr. Carlos Pesero to present the item.
Thank you, Secretary Lopez-Harris. Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez, I have a short verbal presentation. This budget amendment is to recognize excess revenue in fall-in tuition fees and revenue. The request will increase the general fund revenue in the amount of $1,054,305. The additional funds will be utilized for the remainder of the fiscal year, and those expenditures will be concentrated among funding new positions and supplementing our adjunct pool. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I move to approve Budget Amendment twenty-six dash zero-zero-two for fiscal year 2026 as presented.
Motion by Dr. Harris.
Second.
Second by Ms. Science. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Twelve F. Consideration and possible action on approval of the amended tuition and fee schedule for fiscal year 2026. And I'll call on Mr. Carlos Pesero to present the item.
Thank you, Secretary Lopez-Harris. Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez, Chapter fifty-four of the Education Code gives the governing body of this institution the authority to set tuition and fee rates. The recommendation for the amended twenty-six tuition and fee schedule changes, which are in your packet, are as follows. There is a $460 national electrical code fee that should apply to course number E L P T one-three-two-five, and there is also a $155 electrical troubleshooting fee that should apply to course number E L T N one-three-four-three. So to recap what's in your packet, the listing of the fees and the edits that were done there, the fees are not increasing. We're not making any changes in that fashion. We're just pointing the fee to the correct course, because there was an error on the schedule. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I move to approve the amended tuition and fee schedule for fiscal year 2026 as presented.
Motion by Dr. Harris.
Second.
Second by Ms. Science. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Twelve G. Monthly financial statement report for the month ended September thirtieth, 2025, and I'll call on Mr. Carlos Pesero to present the item.
Thank you, Secretary Lopez-Harris. Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez, I have for you the monthly financial statement report for the month of September. As we have shown in previous reports, we have the activity type listed along that first column, which details whether it's revenue or expenditure. We have columns for budget for the month that we're reporting, a year-to-date column, a column for encumbrances, and then a variance column. I'll concentrate my presentation on this column here, on the September column. So we have three fund types that we adopt a budget for, and one of the three is the Education and General Fund. This first slide here has revenues for the Education and General Fund, and for September, that subtotal is $6,900,000. On the following slide is where the expenditures category begins. For the Education and General Fund, we have two subtotals on this slide, one for salaries and wages, which is $1.9 million, and for benefits, which is $541,000. On the following slide is where our M and O category is, and that runs through the end of that slide, and then concludes on the subsequent slide. That subtotal for September is $1,991,000. Still in General Fund, we have a subtotal on this slide for travel and for general institutional. Those subtotals are $130,000 and $134,000 respectively. This is our last slide for the Education and General Fund, and I'll just highlight the total expenditures for General Fund, which are $4,591,000. So that's revenue and expenditures for the General Fund. Moving on to the second of the three funds, the Auxiliary Fund, we have revenue on this slide, and the subtotal is $599,000 for the month of September. And the following slide is where the expenditures categories begin, and we have two subtotals, one for salary and wages, which is $58,000, and benefits, which is $14,000. The following slide is where the M and O category begins, and so that runs through that slide and then concludes on the subsequent subtotal for September, $49,000. Last slide for the Auxiliary Fund, I'll just note the total expenditures for the fund, $122,000. So that's revenue and expenditures for the Auxiliary Fund. And now the last of the three fund types, our General Obligation and Revenue Bond Funds. We have revenue in the month of September for $54,000, and there are no expenditures in the month of September. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
This is for informational purposes only and does not require board action. Twelve H. Fourth Quarter Investment Report for Fiscal Year 2025, and I'll call on Mr. Carlos Pesero to present the item.
Thank you, Secretary Lopez-Harris. Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez, I have for you the Fourth Quarter Investment Report for Fiscal Year ended August thirty-first, 2025. So again, this report is in a similar format. What we try and do with this investment report is recap the activity that's occurred in the prior quarters, and we're reporting this fourth quarter here that we can see. Total funds invested, $107 million, and interest revenue generated for that quarter is $1 million. The report comprises of several pages. It details what bank or financial institution we're investing, either certificates of deposit or just demand deposits or public funds investment pools. All of that is detailed within the following pages. And then, since this report is required by the Public Funds Investment Act, an investment officer needs to prepare, review, and sign off on the report, which we can see here. And so the criteria of the act and that reporting requirement is met by this report in this fashion. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
This is for informational purposes only and does not require board action.
Mr. Pesero, you've gotten better and better at presenting.
Thank you very much, ma'am. It's the leadership of the board that helps me perform.
Twelve A.
All the praise belongs right here.
I would love to make up what we said.
It came so natural, though.
Me, too.
Put a microphone over there.
Twelve A. Grants awarded to Texas Southmost College for the month of September, and I'll call on Dr. Stella Garcia to present the item.
Thank you, Secretary Lopez-Harris, Chair Garza, members of the board, President Rodriguez. Brief report, September, the first month of the fiscal year, we received three grants. They're listed there. The first one is AmeriCorps Texas. We have about thirty-two student workers supported by that grant, and we're in our fifth year. It's a renewal. Apprenticeship Texas, that's a new grant for a phlebotomy, a jailer, and a childcare development associate apprenticeship programs. And the third is our Formula, Carl Perkins Basic Grant. So that's a formula allocation. We submit an application for that funding to come to the college to support CTE programs. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any on any of these grants.
This is for informational purposes only and does not require board action. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Dr. Savaleta.
Yes, ma'am.
Academic Committee.
This is a report of the Academic Committee. Update and information on Texas Southmost College's third-party credentials. Mr. Oscar Adonis will report.
Thank you, Dr. Savaleta. Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez, good afternoon. I'm here to present on third-party credentials. This is a somewhat new set of credentials, and I'm saying somewhat new is because this came out of House Bill eight, so you know, a couple of years ago, House Bill eight became the new funding model for community colleges. And within the House Bill eight, this third-party credentials gave us the opportunity to offer, as the name will tell you, credentials from other organizations that meet the American Council on Education recommendation. So all of these credentials that we currently have under T S E are met or are recommended by the, or have the seal of the American Council of Education. We contracted last year with a company called Coursera. Under Coursera, we currently have twenty-eight professional certificates, and we're currently offering them to all of our students, faculty, and staff free of charge. All they need is their T S E email, being able to log in into Canvas, which is our L M S, our learning management system, and they can, they'll have access to this twenty-eight professional certificates. I know the writing on the big screen is kind of small, but we have, this twenty-eight, as you can see, they're from Google, IBM, Salesforce, Microsoft. So all of the certificates, within each of those certificates, they have a number of courses that the student will have to complete in order to get this professional certificate. Now, once they complete the certificate, the institution is able to submit those completions as part of their funding model as well. So we do get formula funding based on this professional certificates. Just to give you a little bit of data of what happened in the past ninety days, we just released this this fall semester. About three hundred and fifty-one students have registered in the Canvas course. Two hundred and eleven of those actually went into Coursera and actually are taking courses right now within this platform. So you can see, they've seen over a thousand videos, they've done six hundred and plus readings, right? And they've also done three hundred and twelve assessments, which is some of the quizzes that they have to take through there. The top five skills that are being assessed, you can see them there, they're mainly in the software field, the technology field. So, and, I mean, it's based on the professional credentials, right? As you can see, IBM, Google, they're all about these skills. So a lot of our students are going through this, and they're being assessed, and we know exactly what they're looking for.
Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, this item does not require a board action. That concludes my report.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Adonis.
Yes, sir.
How are we promoting this amongst our students? Is it orientation and?
We're doing it through orientation, we're doing it through Canvas. We have, and we're sending out emails to everyone as well, letting them know that the platform is available. We send them a link, they'll click on it, and they'll register for the course.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Facilities Committee. Ms. Camarillo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Facilities Committee met on Monday, November the tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Present were Trustee Garcia, President Rodriguez, myself, members of the T S E administration, and college legal counsel. The committee discussed the following items: fourteen A, facilities update. I'll call in Mr. Pesero, and Mr. Robles, and Mr. Mascoro. Mascoro, excuse me.
Thank you, Trustee Camarillo. Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez, with your permission, I'll have Mr. Robles primarily present the item with assistance by Mr. Mascoro.
Thank you, Mr. Pesero, Ms. Camarillo, Madam Chair, board members, and President Rodriguez. We have an update that we'd like to go through, so thank you for this opportunity to present. Our first project or first report is on the thermal plant cooling tower installation. Project is still on schedule to be completed by December thirty-first, but we're hoping for a few weeks earlier if everything goes right. Tower three and four are set in place, have been piped up and electrical, they are functioning as of last week. They were up, we're actually running through, and they're helping with the chillers. Cooling tower were available on, one and two were available on August the eighth. And the need to extend the completion date is, as of earlier today, probably is not going to be needed because of what occurred today. They were able to shut off of one valve that was kind of, it was an issue where it wouldn't close all the way, got closed today, so that's going to allow them to proceed, and hopefully, like I said, maybe even end a little bit earlier. Here you can see towers one and two are in place, three and four are vacant and cleaned. Next slide, you'll see three and four are in place. What's not visible there is all the piping that has occurred for it. And tower number five now will start to, they'll start the process of removing it so that they can install the new one. That was as a result of today's actions. The hydraulic line replacement project, still on schedule. We've removed, those are the pictures, historical pictures of what has, the types of leaks we've had. Again, it's on schedule. We've met, I've met with purchasing and gonna, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, put this out for R F Ps so that it can be advertised, and we can get vendors back, come back to the board, and present the results of the R F P. Next is the pipe fitting lab. It's, the ceiling fans, electrical wiring, exhaust system did begin on time on September eighteenth. They were cutting out the holes for the extraction system, so those will be installed here in the next couple of days or next week sometime. And they are still expected to be completed no later than December thirty-first, if not sooner. And again, this will increase their cohort size from ten to twenty. Here's just some pictures of what's happening in that area. There you can see the main trunk line that's going to be connected to that exterior wall where the extraction system will be. Here again, just another picture, and on the left is just the veins that are going to the extraction area, and on the right is the pipes, just so you could see how large they are. Here's the extraction fans themselves will be attached to the walls on that side, actually, directly where they're at. Here's the electrical lines that are basically wrapped up now. They are connected and wired. There's just some final connections that need to be made. Next is the rehab of the American Legion. HVAC has been completed on A. Area B will be started here in the next couple of days or early part of next week. The rehab of the interior was done completely internally by our staff. Areas of remodel where the bathrooms, office open spaces, we replaced a lot of tiles, and the floor's been scrubbed and buffed. We'll probably go in one last time just to make sure that if it needs to be swept or whatever the case might be, just to make it rent-ready. Here's a picture of the side that's closest to the school. And this is just on the left, all the tiles that were removed. And on the right, the tiles put back, ceiling tiles put back, and all HVAC connected, blowing, functioning as it's supposed to. This furniture purchase project was actually spearheaded by Dr. Garcia. It was approved by the board on June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five for the following buildings: M one, building, the classrooms, Cortez Hall, the labs, I T E C, the common areas, I T E C, the entrance was completed on, or the area. ITech, the entrance was completed on or the area that was completed on October the 2nd. The ITech as well, Student Lounge, F8C was completed on October the 6th. ITech East and West Corridors were completed on October the 5th. And Cortez Building completed October the 5th. Pending as furniture delivery and installation are scheduled for November the 13th through 14th for the ITech Corridor, the Ottomans, and M1 Building classrooms. Here you'll see some before and after on the left side is is the way it was prior to delivery. On the right side, you can see the difference of the colors that pop and make that space more welcoming. Here is in in various areas of the ITech, this is the entrance. Here you can see the just the various couches, tables, different seating areas. And it really does make a huge difference for that space. Here's the east and west corridors. Again, you can see the the new furniture that that has been placed, and it really does brighten up this area as well. This is Cortez Classroom. You can see the various desks and chairs that are are in the rooms now. On the the bottom set of of slide or pictures are are desks that have more than one type of use, so you can see how it tilts up for for those classrooms. The PUB Water Tower Demo, as we know, it's been really slow, but here in the last few days, they've made a lot of cutting. You'll see in the next slide, that actually that portion right there where it shows that that angled space is gone now as of yesterday, I believe, and are they're beginning to work down towards the base. I believe that the latest or the revised demo completion is December 17th or in that area. So, keep our fingers crossed, though it'll be completely down, and then they'll just need the the ground area where they begin to pull up the concrete and get that completed. And then at that point, we'll know when we can begin to use our other parking lot that's that is there. And it that concludes my report. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
All right. Well, this item is for information only, no action is required. This this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Camario. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Student Services, Dr. Harris?
The Student Services Committee met on Monday, November 10th, 2025. Present were Trustee Garcia, President Rodriguez, myself, members of the TSC administration and college legal counsel. The committee discussed the following item. Student Services Update, and I will call on Dr. David Plummer to present the item.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez-Herez, Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez. I just want to thank you for allowing us to come and sharing what the great things Student Services are doing. With your permission, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Vasquez, our AVP, to do the presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez. Before you, I will be highlighting, let me see, it's. I'll be highlighting several services that are offered within the Division of Student Development. Financial aid, Veteran Success Center, Testing Center, Counseling and Student Accessibility Services, basic need support such as food pantry and transportation. We'll be reviewing these services. So, financial aid. Financial aid is very critical for our students, especially here at TSC. Seventy-two percent of our student population are receiving financial aid. And through this financial aid department, we do provide services to students to help them complete the free application for federal student aid, which is the FAFSA application. We attend high school events, we have workshops, we also promote this through our registration roundup events, and many table-ling events. Through the financial aid, as students apply, they're able to qualify for federal and state grants. These are free money where students do not have to pay back. They're also eligible for student loans. They do go through a loan counseling, so they are aware of the the restrictions and I guess consequences if they don't pay back their loans, but also understanding who they need to contact once they do obtain a loan. And this is money that needs to be paid back. Also, we provide federal work-study opportunities for our students through the Department of Ed. As you can see in this picture, we do promote this on our social media and to students through email and and on our website so students can have the opportunities to work on our campus and earn a little cash for their studies. And then lastly, we have scholarships, and this is free money. And that brings me to my next slide. We do have a platform called Award Spring that we provide to our students. They must have a TSC credential login in order to access the platform, but this platform holds over 50 scholarships that students can complete one application, and they if they qualify or they're eligible for any of the the scholarships based on the criteria, they're able to receive a status to say you've qualified for five of these scholarships. There is an external review of these scholarships. The for this year, this application opened on October 1st, and we will be closing the application on April 1st, 2026. Just a little brief information on the scholarships. We do have our TSC Foundation scholarships in this platform as well. Just this past year, we were graciously enough to be awarded $400,000 from the foundation, which we exhausted all funds and helped out 268 students. So, thank you, everyone, for your service for that. We also promote outside scholarship opportunities, and we have this on our website, and we do share this with our students. Again, these are outside scholarship opportunities. We do let students know that we are unable to find out what the status on these applications are for them due to the due to that that they are outside of the the college. So, but we do help them log in. If they need any requirement for that scholarship, we do provide assistance for them. With financial aid comes with accountability on our students, and this is based on Department of Education for Financial Aid. And this is what's called satisfactory academic progress. We embed this to our students at orientation, our advising sessions. We also closely monitor their eligibility throughout their journey here at Texas Southmost College. And with the satisfactory academic progress, students must maintain a GPA of a 2.0 overall along with making sure that their completed credit hours, divide that by attempted credit hours will give you the percentage completion rate. And so, we make sure to let students know how their progress is. We do send out notifications, letters to them to let them know your own warning status, you need to come and see an advisor, a student success coach, so we can go ahead and help you out in establishing what grade you need in that class or project what that completion rate should be. But moving along, also, in in conjunction with the satisfactory academic progress is the timeframe limit. So, the Department of Ed has provided us regulations of 150% of the credits required to complete their program. So, if a student is pursuing an associate degree program, that's 60 hours, you multiply that by 1.5, and that gives you 90 hours that the student has in order to complete that degree. If they don't complete that degree, I'm sorry, if they go past the 90 hours, or if they don't have the 67 completion rate or the GPA of 2.0, then we we have an appeal process. So, we do provide information on how students can appeal their satisfactory academic progress in which we create workshops. We invite students to these workshops so we can help them understand what needs to be documentation needed to be provided so our committee can review and see if they're eligible to approve them for financial aid for the next semester. Our Veteran Success Center. So, our Veteran Success Center, this we provide services to assisting students in completing their Veteran Affairs benefit forms to receive benefits for their education. Students have access to the Veteran Success Center where they can use a computer lab photocopy machine to assist with completing their VA documents. We also do referrals out to the community resource resources. So, for example, last year, we referred 15 students to a United Way of Cameron County. And and also, we do receive funds from Veteran Affairs to hire a work-study in our Veterans Office. As long as they have veteran benefits that they're receiving, then they can definitely qualify to work. Our next service is our Testing Center service. So, our Testing Center provides services to students by offering a variety of exams, as you can see here. TSI 2.0 is the Texas Success Initiative Assessment. This assessment is a state mandated program designed to assess whether students are prepared for entry-level college coursework in the areas of reading, writing, and mathematics. So, this is one of our popular tests that we do administer here at Texas Southmost College. Our next test is the Nursing Entrance Exam, and this is required for students that are who are who wish to apply to the nursing program to and must complete this nursing exam before being admitted to the program. We also offer the English as a Second Language Placement Exam, Credit by Exam that we offer here at Texas Southmost College, Microsoft Office Certification. We also have the National Healthcare Association Certificate Test, and this is mainly for patient care techs, lobotomy, medical records, and then our National Center for Competency Testing, which certifies healthcare professionals. We also have Pearson is a platform that students that we do proctor test on our campus, but the students actually pay for the test through Pearson. But they offer a variety of tests, so it's a GD, pharmacy tech, insurance agent, teacher certifications, and licenses. And lastly, we offer the Texas Commission Exam. This is mainly for our peace officers at the ITech Campus. Once they finish the program, they are able to come on our campus and take their certification exam. TSI exemptions. So, TSI exemptions is mainly for our Texas Success Initiative Assessment. Students may be exempt from taking the TSI if they meet one of the following criterias of ACT, SAT scores, STAR testing scores. We also have some additional exemptions for our veteran students or active military along with appropriate college coursework from other institutions that we do transfer in, that students may be able to be exempt. And if students have an associate degree or bachelor degree from another institution and are transferring in with us, they are exempt. They do not need to take the TSI. And this is a regulation through Texas Higher Education Corning Board. This is a copy of our testing schedule that we have on the website, and we promote to students. In order for students to secure a testing date, we do have the TSI testing through on campus, and we also proctor from their house. So, there's two ways that they're able to take the TSI, which is proctoring from their house, mainly being online, and also other exams that are offered throughout the the month. Counseling and Student Accessibility Services. So, Counseling and Student Accessibility Services, we offer counseling services, accessibility services, and off-campus student resources. Our office just recently relocated to Cortez Hall and in Room 129. Some of the services that are provided by by the staff, such as counseling services, anger management, trauma coping skills, grief, and then also Student Accessibility Services that are being offered on our campus in remote or in classrooms, such as sign language interpreters, short five-minute breaks, audio recorded lectures, or we can accommodate to test and quizzes with the instructor and making sure that they're aware of these accommodations. The way a student can seek these resources for counseling service, they're by walk-in, they can call, they can email and set up an appointment, but we're available 8 to 5 Monday through Friday. And if need be, if students are not able to to book an appointment between those hours, we are accommodating to extra hours afterwards. The Student Accessibility Services, to obtain an accommodation, students must complete an accommodations request form, also known as the intake packet, and provide all necessary documentation. So, TSC staff can assist during this process, but the most important part about this intake is that the students must self-disclose that they have a disability with us. It's very different from the high school, so they must self-disclose. Once they submit the intake packet, it's it gets reviewed by the team, and then they will make accommodations with the student and talk to the faculty to provide these accommodations. Also, if there are any issues that are not on this slide that students are facing, we meet their needs, and we seek out those resources for them. We also refer out to the community. So, for example, the Good Neighbor Settlement House, we've referred students out, and Tropical Texas Crisis Hotline. When our counselor meets with students and we know we need to refer them out to Tropical, we our counselor contacts that number with the student there to book that appointment with that student. Unfortunately, just due to confidentiality, we are unable to contact Tropical to see if the student attended the appointment or not, but we are able to follow up with the student and and verify if if they were able to to attend their appointment. We also have a Community Resource Guide that we provide to all students, and in this resource guide, we provide a variety of community resources such as Medicaid statewide, temporary assistance for needy families, Texas Workforce Solutions of Cameron County, and many more. So, we are with our basic needs, basic needs support, and this consists of our food pantry. Currently, we have about 80 students just this semester that we are providing services for, 28 at ITech, and 52 here on our main campus that have received some food supplies from our food pantry. We do provide services for both areas due to our hours of operation. And we also partner with the community garden as well with any vegetables that they do harvest, and they are able to bring to our food pantry, and we can definitely provide them out to our students. Lastly is our transportation with the partnership with the city of Bronson and Bronson Metro. We offer free transportation services to all enrolled TSC students. All buses operate in the Bronson area only, so this is all the route that our students have. So this is all the routes that our students have access for throughout the, um, Bronsville area. And, uh, with this, um, students are able to access it free using their TSE ID card, um, or their digital ID card on their phone. Here's a report that the city of Bronsville shared with us. And just, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of August of twenty twenty-five, we've had, for Texas Southmost College, which is a scorpion connector, we've had about four hundred and ninety-five students, um, utilize the, uh, transportation. These may be duplicate counts. Um, and so I am still working with the city of Bronsville to see if we can get some unduplicated counts. But overall, that is the number of TSE students that are utilizing our bus routes all over Bronsville. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is for informational purposes only and does not require board action. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Just a quick question. Um, do you want to donate food to the pantry? Can we just do it at any time of the, of the operating hours or?
Yes, anytime that we're open, we're, our Oliva Student Services Building is open from eight AM to six PM. And currently, we are actually having a food drive. Uh, we've announced it to our whole, um, institution through, to our students. So we'll be more than happy to accept any food donations, canned food donations.
Bring some donations, thank you.
Is there a specific date for this food drive or is it just?
Whenever. Uh, so right now, we, we are, um, we have it till December third. We are part, we're hoping to partner with our, uh, Mr. Vega for the, um, Christmas event and see if, if faculty and staff can bring some, um, canned food donations for that event. But we will definitely let you know.
What is the most popular thing?
Oh, the most popular thing that they take, um, the maruchas, the, the, yes, those are very pop, the cup, the noodles in a cup. Ramen, there it is, the, the ramen, uh, macaroni, uh, boxes of macaroni, uh, soups, any type of soup, but mainly chicken noodle soups. And then just, you know, rice and, um, beans and, um, any type of canned vegetable food. But if you would like a list, I, I do have a list and I can definitely share that with you all. Yes, most definitely. Okay, I'll send it to Ms. Claudia. Thank you.
Maybe, um, Claudia, you can send it to all the trustees. Okay, Policies Committee. You say your signs?
Yeah. The Policy Committee met on Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five. President were Chair Garza, Trustee Aldrete, President Rodriguez, myself, members of the TSE Administration, College Deal, and Board Council. The committee discussed the following. Sixteen A, consideration and possible action to approve the revisions to the following local policies. CF Local, purchasing and acquisition revised policy. DIAA Local, freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation, sex and sexual violence, revised policy. DIAB Local, freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation, other protected characteristics, revised policy. FDFDA Local, freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation, sex and sexual violence, revised policy. FFDB Local, freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation, other protected characteristics, revised policy. I call on legal counsel.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez. CF Local is the purchasing and acquisition is the one that has the most changes in it. It changes the threshold, increasing the threshold from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. It's attached to your policy. The vision, the revision is also recommended for that for amounts fifty thousand or more. The method of, uh, purchasing shall require the formal solicitation process. Accepted solicitation methods include competitive bidding, competitive sealed proposals, and other methods in accordance with CF legal and state law. Uh, the policy retains the requirement that for purchase valued at fifty thousand or more, the college president or designated shall make a recommendation to the board, and the board shall make that final decision. Uh, the other four, uh, local policies are, um, slightly, are just, um, more administrative changes. They're all highlighted in your packet. Uh, DIAA, the contact information for the Title IX Coordinator for Employees is, uh, is updated. And other clarifying language is, is included again. Those are all highlighted. DIAB, uh, the contact information again for the Title IX Coordinator for Employees is updated. FFDA, the contact information for the Title IX Coordinator for Students is updated. And, uh, other clarifying language is included, which are highlighted in your packet. FFDB, uh, the contact information again, the counselor and Accessibility Service Manager for Students is updated.
I move to approve local policy CF, DIAA, DIAB, FFDA, and FFDB.
Move motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Camarillo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Next item, sixteen B, acknowledgement of TASB Legal Update Fifty. I call on Mr. Pena.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez. The, uh, legal policies are just here for acknowledgement. We do not take any action on them. They're already, uh, posted on our website and are part of the legal, um, legal. That they've received them.
Okay, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Science. The board will now convene an executive session as provided by Government Code, Chapter five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, five five one point zero seven four, and five five one point zero seven six one. Stand.
From executive session, do we have a motion, Mr. Camarillo?
Yes, I move that the board of trustees approve award of RFP 26-01 and authorize President Rodriguez to execute the contract as presented and discussed in executive session.
Motion by Mr. Camarillo.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sainz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Mr. Garcia?
I move that the board of trustees approve the fiscal year 2025-2026 salaries schedule as presented and discussed in executive session.
Motion by Mr. Garcia.
Second.
Second by Mr. Camarillo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Consideration. Okay. Announcements. Regular board meeting Thursday, January the 22nd. And Friday, I mean February the 19th. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Camarillo. Second by Dr. Harris. Those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.